Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council meeting of October 25th, 2023. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
And Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you, and welcome to all of you. Thank you for being here. We apologize for the delay in the start. Welcome to Professor Holmes' class at Bakersfield College. How many of you are from B.C.? A lot of you. You're making up our audience. Anyone from CSUB here tonight? Welcome, Roadrunners. Welcome, Renegades, and it's always good to have our students here participating in the process. We had the pleasure tonight of having Pastor Rusty Rhodes, who's a pastor at Olive Knolls and also principal at Olive Knolls Nazarene School, where they have about 500 students and are expanding and growing rapidly. So thank you so much for your service. We were to have a student lead the pledge, but I don't see the student here, so Councilmember Cor will be leading the pledge. Would you all please stand? Pastor?
Are we having the pledge first or the prayer?
God, then country.
All right. You've got it. It's by our heads. Our Father in Heaven, we hallow your name and give you praise. You have blessed our city, our state, and our nation with freedom and liberty. The abundance we enjoy comes from your hand and no other. We humble ourselves before you. May your will be done in the city of Bakersfield. We pray that these fine men and women of our council will seek your wisdom as they lead this municipality. May their leadership guide our lives into the kind of community that is filled with peace and respect, with that Bakersfield set a different tone than the bitterness and ranker we see throughout our nation and the world. We pray for the peace of Jerusalem and all those in harm's way this day. Your will be done, and may your people, who are called by your name, humble ourselves, pray, seek your face, and renounce the wickedness of our nature. Please hear us, forgive our sins, heal our land. In the name of Jesus, we pray it. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic which stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. For safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chambers or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public statements.
In keeping with the council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during that non-agenda portion of the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues, however, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council cannot take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on tonight's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any public speaker cards for items listed on tonight's agenda.
Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers for items not listed on tonight's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have received five public speaker cards for items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Armando Garcia.
Thank you. Welcome. Please introduce yourself and go ahead.
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Armando Garcia. I am a resident of Ward 1 of the City of Bakersfield. I am here today on behalf of the Young Democrats of Kern County. I wanted to address the COVID-19 mask mandate resolution that was brought in pass two weeks ago, spearheaded by Ken Weir. I firmly believe that this resolution was brought up in bad faith. Firstly, this is something that has been brought up and is being pushed by petty political agendas and not something that is actually backed by science. Secondly, COVID-19 severely impacted the lives of not just everyone standing in this room, but beyond that. To focus on pushing such a mundane resolution is a waste of time and is taking away attention from issues that are seriously affecting our communities. And lastly, when this resolution was passed, I want to make it clear that it was only a council of four members. So I really believe that the City of Bakersfield was not properly represented when this resolution was passed, and I demand that you pull this resolution and consider taking a vote on this with a full council, with full proper representation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Next speaker, please.
Lynda Johnson, followed by Noe Garcia.
Good evening, Mayor Go and City Council members. My name is Lynda Johnson LeBlanc, and I am the organizational lead for work sites on the Blue Zones Project Bakersfield team. The initiative is sponsored by Adventist Health, California Resources Corporation, and the City of Bakersfield. Our collective goal is to become a Blue Zones certified community, where people want to come live, work, play, and worship. I would like to acknowledge and thank the City of Bakersfield for being a sponsor and great champion of the project. We approach our work through the transformation of people, places, and policy. I have colleagues that work in the people and policy sectors. The places sector is comprised of restaurants, grocery stores, work sites, and schools. My specific role as a lead is to work with work sites or employers to help improve employee well-being. We conduct this work through a pledge process, and each entity or organization agrees or pledges to implement evidence-based practices that have shown to significantly improve individual organizational health and well-being, or verify that an existing worksite practice meets the Blue Zones Project criteria. One component of the Bakersfield certification criteria is for a minimum of 52 diverse employers to become Blue Zones Project approved. Diversity includes organization, industry, and size, ownership, and employee populations of varying race, gender, and ethnicity. We want every resident to have awareness and access to the Blue Zones Project principles for life, longevity, and well-being. My ask of you is to review the document shared that details some of the areas of opportunity where I have yet to make a connection and/or where we would like to formulate partnerships and allies. If you have suggestions or can connect me with someone via a warm introduction, please contact me. This initiative requires-
Ms. LeBlanc, your time is up. Can you bring your comments to a close, please?
All right. This initiative requires the experience, expertise, and networks of local leaders to be a success, and we appreciate your support in helping to move this mission forward. Thank you in advance.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor, if I could make a comment?
Councilmember Arias.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson LeBlanc, thank you so much for taking me up on my offer and joining us here tonight. I really appreciate all the great work that you're doing and that Blue Zones is doing for our community. If I could make an ask of staff to please reach out to Ms. Johnson LeBlanc and see if there's some opportunities for us to help her. She's made it very easy for us to follow and see exactly who she needs contacts with here in our community, and I think the least we could do is make that introduction. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Noe Garcia, followed by Richard.
Hello. Good evening, councilmembers. Good evening, Mayor Go. My name's Noe Garcia. I work for the Dolores Huerta Foundation as Director of Civic Engagement and Government Relations. I'm here speaking on behalf of the resolution that the city passed to not enforce any future COVID-19 mandates. I'm in opposition of that mandate for a variety of reasons. I agree with previous speaker on really that the whole city was not represented during this past vote, and I am requesting that, you know, you all pull that mandate and vote on it again with full representation by the whole council. This mandate does not protect our community. It does not take into consideration the risks to the individuals with, you know, disabilities who are immunocompromised, and really just does not take into consideration the impact that not enforcing these future mandates has and is a distraction of really getting to the work of, you know, building our economy here, really providing jobs for folks here, building our infrastructure. This is not in those goals of what this city council has outlined, and so I really encourage you all to reconsider this resolution, really put it out. You know, I was appalled when I saw this in the news, and I really want to see some action being taken by the council members, and so I will be following up with you all and being connected to this council to see if you all are going to actually pull this resolution or bring it up to another vote. So I look forward to, you know, seeing that on the next agenda item or hearing discussion today, so I thank you all for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Next speaker, please.
Richard, followed by Yessenia Ocampo.
Hello. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Richard Keles, and I am here today on behalf of Building Healthy Communities of Kern. The goal of our organization is to advance health and racial equity for everyone here in Kern County. That being said, the pandemic of 2020 affected many communities in Kern County, especially those communities that are underserved and underrepresented. That is why I am here today urging you to take into consideration the safety protocols put forth by the state and federal government regarding COVID, as it is crucial for the health of our underserved communities to be protected and be taken into consideration. As the previous speakers have said, it does seem like all of Bakersfield was not included in that decision-making, and we would like to see if you guys, if the council could re-vote on that and take it into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yessenia Ocampo.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Yessenia Ocampo. I'm a Bakersfield resident, and I'm also the Health Program Director with the Dolores Huerta Foundation. I'm here to voice my disagreement with the resolution that was passed in the last meeting to, about the mandate, excuse me. The global pandemic and the intensification of uncertainty around the world compounded the need to organize COVID-19 relief programs. In 2021, DHF, in partnership with Building Healthy Communities and various organizations, came together to establish United Against COVID Coalition and worked to provide COVID health education and outreach. To date, we hosted over 140 clinics and 10,000 doses in Kern County alone. Vaccine clinics include vital information, including hot food meals when possible, food baskets, that we have served to over 14,000 families. Beyond responding to the immediate resources, we have secured a partnership with UC Merced Community Labor Center to launch a community needs assessment in the Central Valley, including in the city of Bakersfield. The purpose of the community needs assessment is to clearly articulate the needs of the most under-invested communities that are trying to recover from the long-lasting effects of the pandemic. The goal is to support an equitable economic workforce. The decision to ignore mandates will affect thousands of community members, most impacted by the community, and it will especially compromise the livelihood of essential workers, including farmworkers, whose work generate over $32 billion annually, just in the San Joaquin Valley. We ask the City of Bakersfield to rescind the resolution against future COVID mandates. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ocampo. Madam City Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
That was our final speaker, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent calendar items-
Mayor, if I may, I had requested to speak.
Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. One, I want to acknowledge those who are here and spoke, but first I want to apologize to my constituents for missing the last City Council meeting due to work. As folks may know, this is not a full-time job or council like in other cities, especially in top 10 cities within the state, so I also work another full-time job and had to be there for my commitments to work. In acknowledging the comments of our community members, feedback from constituents that I still receive up until today, expressing their rightful disappointment with the vote as well as with my absence, to which I apologize for, I hear you, and I am very regret, I have lots, I have much regret for missing that, but I was under the impression that, you know, the decisions made on this dais were, would be well-informed, and it's true. In this moment, there is no COVID surge happening, that'll mandate masks, as our experts have shared with us. And in response, I want to share that it should be the experts that are guiding us, and that being the medical experts that navigated us through that first pandemic. Just as we rely on engineers to build safe and sound buildings for us, we also should rely on our medical experts for our care, do we not? I believe we do. We resort to the experts for making those decisions for us. And a lot of conversations were had about choice at the last City Council meeting, the choice to mask if someone is sick or is subject to an illness based on being immunocompromised, that is, you know, a long-term illness, being pregnant, so many, the list goes on, but it's their choice, right? And if we want to talk about freedom and choices, you know, we protect those who are most vulnerable in most of the decisions and even different kind of topics that we've talked about here on the City Council, and I think the signal has gone far and wide of the decisions made at the last City Council meeting, and kind of the political point and maneuvers of that decision are very clear, but I also agree, I don't think we need this resolution at our city. I think passing this resolution makes our governing body, our city administration, look ill-informed, ill-advised, and kind of out of touch with our community's needs and what they're actually worried about, which is their living conditions in this moment, with rent being too high, a fentanyl crisis, road safety, pedestrian safety, the list goes on, but those are top of mind for folks. Of course, the kind of the impending COVID-19 is as well, but again, our medical experts have navigated us through that to be able to gather here in this forum today. And I want to make a referral, and I look to our city attorney to rescind the resolution or at least begin that process, so that when we, so that we can at least start rescinding this resolution, and for the very reason that we don't need it in our city. And as shared, it virtually has no power, so I think we're better than this. I truly believe that at the city level, and for those who think and say that this is done and over, that the pandemic has gone, there are folks who are living with this today, but folks are, again, still expressing their concerns that something like this would pass at this council, and decisions made even just two weeks ago simply don't go away. So I think the political performance worked. I think it had its moment. I think it's time that we step up and meet the expectations of our residents at this dais, and so I'd like to make, like I said, I'd like to make the referral to rescind this resolution that states not to enforce any future COVID-19 mandates or impose penalties within our city jurisdiction.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, thank you, Councilmember Cor, as well, for making that referral, and thank you to everybody who came out to speak tonight. I'll just recall the early weeks of the pandemic, in those early months where, like everyone else, did not know what to do, other than to shelter and do what it took to protect your family. Working with the county public health department and also with county supervisor, the D.C. Prez, we were able to set up the very first drive-through station where we were doing active testing to see if you or your family member was sick, and we had lines of hundreds, if not thousands, of cars on a daily basis, and that was to make sure that we could protect ourselves, we could protect our families, and protect our community. And, you know, it blows my mind that we are now having a conversation about a resolution to completely reject any help and any guidance from the professional experts on this very topic. I think it's poor policy. I think it's frankly a wedge issue. I think that, you know, historically, members of this dais, not to say the ones that are up here today, but in the past, have utilized this platform to pass similar resolutions, and I think it's poor precedent. It is irresponsible government, and we must take action, and I appreciate the community members for coming out tonight. I support Councilmember Cor's referral, and I would like to ask our city attorney to advise what those next steps could look like.
Madam City Attorney.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I understand the referral, and I will do the research, but I will tell you that as I sit here right now, it's not my understanding that you can rescind something for at least a year because the vote was taken and it was not done without prejudice. So again, I understand the referral. I will do the research, and I will bring back what I can discover, but that is my current understanding as I sit here today.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And now, next item, please.
Consent calendar items 7A through 7Z for approval.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one councilmember who wishes to recuse themselves for an item. Councilmember Freeman, if you want to read.
I have a potential conflict with item 7Y. Potential, I have a potential conflict with item 7Y.
7Y, and also, we will pull item 7F for separate consideration at the request of Councilmember Weir. With that, I will make a motion to adopt the consent agenda, except for item 7F.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Gray absent.
Thank you. And now, item 7F.
Motion to approve item 7F.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and Mayor's statements.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Colleagues, I have a few referrals to make tonight. Number one, yesterday, the community learned of a generous contribution and donation made by Ms. Cynthia Lake to the Fox Theater Foundation for the purposes of the purchase of the Nile Theater. This will be a huge boost to downtown Bakersfield and downtown's nightlife. The Fox Theater was saved 30-plus years ago, and thank God it was. It has been a great amenity to our downtown, and now the Nile, in similar fashion, will serve as a wonderful entertainment venue and help spur growth in the downtown, in the downtown core. And Ms. Lake has already, to date, contributed over $10 million in investment to the Fox Theater and to other foundations for the purposes of redeveloping the section between Nile Theater and the Fox Theater. And so tonight, I'd like to make a referral that the council consider naming these blocks between the Nile and the Fox Theater, the Lake Entertainment and Arts District. Number two is, we have seen a number of private development and investment happening within our downtown core, and oftentimes, the city places expensive, costly requirements for off-site improvements, curb, gutter, sidewalk, for these projects to become approved. I would like the city to consider a resolution that no longer requires off-site improvements for projects that occur in the downtown core, and I'd like to send this to Planning and Development Committee for consideration and study. Number three is, just recently, this last week, Get Bus Board had a strategic planning session, and in that meeting, there was a conversation related to an idea that I have been championing for several years now, to establish the downtown circulator, some sort of a connector between downtown Bakersfield and Old Town Kern, in order for us to help both neighborhoods and help visitors get from to and fro without having to enter a vehicle. This has been a project that has gone some traction within Get Bus and within the community, but I think we need to, we ought to send a message to Get that we would very much like to see this sort of downtown connector. In many other communities, you see a trolley, or you've seen some other vehicle that is able to connect members of the public who are on foot to another neighborhood of distinct character that is just beyond walking distance. So I'd like us to establish, adopt a resolution in support of the downtown circulator and send that to Get Bus and to their board. And then finally, there have been a number of smoke shops that have popped up in Ward 2 that have been a point of concern for my constituents. I would like us to, at the Safe and Healthy Communities, Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods Committee, explore an extension of our recently adopted tobacco retail license to revisit the Muni Code that will regulate smoke shops in, not just in Ward 2, but throughout the city of Bakersfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
I just wanted to briefly share with the other council members that I just got back from a trip to Germany. I spent, it was about three weeks in Germany, primarily Frankfurt, but Heidelberg, mine, some other small cities, and I wrote a note to Mr. Drakelhaus about roads, and what was really interesting to observe is that within the city, it's the core of the city, comparable to our downtown, almost all the roads were one-way, no more than 20 feet wide, which is what our alley, this is for a city with a million or two million people, no wider than our normal alleys, and they usually had parking on that, so that one lane was eight feet for parking, and there was one lane, and it just worked fine for millions of people. And they didn't have any arterials. They had collectors instead, which would move around the city to move traffic, but, and sometimes they were, well, they usually were separated by very large, you could call it a median or just spaces, trees, whatever, but they might be 100 or 200. They weren't necessarily right next to each other. They weren't necessarily right next to each other. It seemed they used about one-half the square footage of pavement we do, and one-half the cost, one-half the CO2, one-half the maintenance, one-half the replacement. And I thought, you know, that's a lot smarter than the way America does it. And when we look at our downtown vision plan, I hope we do someday, and if we look at future areas that are new, new village centers, and maybe if we're even looking at revitalized areas, like areas around MLK Park or something, that we think about one-way streets where there's plenty of access. Nobody seemed to have any problem with one-way this way and coming back one-way. You see this in some of our downtown cities already. But I just started thinking of the huge savings. When it, what is it, more than a million a lane mile now, for all this pavement that stretches that, and you look at our city, because we're spread out, we, we're gonna, we have trouble afford, that's why our cities are not, our roads are not in the ideal condition. We don't have the money. It costs so much when you have this much pavement area to make, to put in, so that raises the cost of all the housing dramatically. That's all charged to the new homeowner and to the commercial. It's just something we should really be cognizant of as we move forward in redevelopment or new development, that we, we really look hard at one-way streets and much narrower streets. Just if nothing else, to save money, it, you don't have, you have half the noise of two, you know, when they're going like this, your noise is calmed down. When they're narrower, the people slow down. It just, it makes for a better atmosphere, as well as saving enormous amounts of money. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to give some kudos to a couple of special folks at the city staff level. Greg and his team have done just tremendous work with standing up the Ad Hoc on Transportation Committee. And every, we had a meeting earlier this week, and every single meeting, it seems like, you know, they have some great progress on a lot of projects to improve bicycle and pedestrian safety. You know, a couple in War I, really proud of the work that we've done on Laurel and Santa Drive with having the first speed humps installed in, I think, over a decade. So we're really proud of that work, and I just want to say thank you to my colleagues, both Councilmembers Smith and Cor, for heading that up with me and really proud of that work. But want to continue to push forward. You know, tonight, we've also heard about some of the good work that we're trying to do regarding tree canopies. We recognize that in the summers, oftentimes, it can get up to 110, 112 degrees, and folks are looking for an opportunity to really cool down. We continue to push and make investments into curb, gutter, and sidewalk in addition to cycle tracks, so that we can ensure that, you know, in a safe way, we are creating opportunities for everybody to use our roadways, not just the automotive, automobiles. So with that, tonight, I want to ask staff to review projects from a resiliency and a sustainability lens and perspective to create a short, but focused and prioritized list of important projects with broad community support and significant grant funding opportunity at the state and federal level. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Cor.
I want to echo the sentiment shared by Councilmember Arias and show my appreciation for my subcommittee members, Ad Hoc Committee members. Councilmember Smith spends a lot of time, you know, outside of the committee, also working with staff in order to bring forward just the language and the vision, and really, it's a collaborative effort. And you really don't see the work until you're at the committee or you are, or it returns to council, but a lot of time goes into really creating a vision for how we're making multimodal safety a reality here in the city. So I want to thank Councilmembers Smith and Arias for all the time and effort and vision and creativity that's going into that. We had a very exciting presentation from our High Speed Rail folks yesterday, and it was a welcome update and receiving some news and also some visuals about, of a station and really looking forward into the future. And though it always feels a little bit further away, we were so happy to see progress being made there. And our friends at Caltrans were also in attendance. So really, that joint effort, as well as our Public Works Division and staff are all in attendance, as well as our traffic engineer. So it's really a collaborative effort and a united front in that respect. So it was a, it was a very positive and optimistic update to receive that from our High Speed Rail folks. So, you know, getting from downtown San Francisco to downtown LA in three hours, you know, we're getting closer to that reality, and our Central Valley segment is coming closer to being a reality. You know, for folks in attendance today, it's predicted to be somewhere between 2030 and 2033 to be initially operational, and that's with our fingers crossed. So that's just a small update, at least from our committee, that I'd like to share, and I wanted to thank my colleagues again, so thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. I don't see any other requests for comment, and so we stand adjourned at 6:02. And students, just so you're aware, this is an unusually short meeting, but it is. Thank you for being here.